Good evening. Now, call the October 22nd regular council meeting of the Portsmouth City Council to order. And I'll ask my colleagues on council to stand. Unfortunately, Pastor Michael Williams has got the flu. And Councilman Paul Battle is going to lead us in our invocation. So I'll ask my colleagues on council to stand. Then after the invocation, I'll ask everybody in the audience to stand as Councilman Bill Moody leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Paul.
Father bless us that we may do the people's will. Lord bless us that we may have the dream, the dream that all Americans have, and it becomes a reality. By all means, Lord, continue to bless our city, our state, and the United States of America. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next item is electronic roll call. And I'll ask my colleagues on council to indicate your presence by hitting the yes button. Yeah. Madam Clerk, I think we have a quorum.
Yes, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, before you is a very colorful city council. The October is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, not only in the United States but worldwide. We're wearing pink to emphasize breast cancer. In the United States, over 300,000 women each year are diagnosed with breast cancer. And besides skin cancer, it is the most common form of cancer in women that we have. And of the 300,000, 40,000 die unfortunately. And so it's been a long tradition of the Portsmouth City Council that this Tuesday, the second council meeting in the month of October, that we wear pink to show our solidarity in this great fight, in a serious fight against this dreaded disease. And I encourage you to not only educate yourself and your loved ones, but your friends and neighbors about breast cancer, their early signs, the need for early detection. But most importantly, join in the fight and do what you can to find a cure for this awful disease. And with that, we have the consideration of the approval of minutes of previous meetings. We have the minutes of a call meeting of September the 23rd, 2019. We have the minutes of a call meeting of September the 24th, 2019. And we have the minutes of a regular meeting of September the 24th, 2019. We'll consider the adoption of these minutes all in one motion. Is there such a motion? Move adoption?
Right.
We have a motion on the floor that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. Madam Clerk, that motion carries. We come now to special presentations. And during the course of this calendar year, 2019, council has been recognizing those families which serve as foster families to children in need of foster care in our community. And we will continue that tonight. Dr. Patton?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, we're going to ask our Director of Social Services, Ms. Pamela Luhlhill, to come forward and introduce the families.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. Tonight, we have one family to recognize. Would the Peel family come forward? Now, although Mr. Peel could not be here tonight, we have Mrs. Peel and one of her children. Roger and Ramona Peel have over 20 years of combined experience serving as foster parents. After learning that they were not able to have biological children of their own, they still felt a calling to share their love and support with the children in the community. So the Peels made the decision to open their home to become foster parents and thus far have fostered successfully over 31 children. The Peels currently have one foster child who is seven years old. She's been with the Peels for nearly four years. This little lady is currently in the second grade and is reading on a sixth grade level. She consistently earns honor roll status, and she states that she loves school. She is a girl scout, and she recently came back from her very first camping trip. The Peels have fostered children ranging from infancy to young adulthood. Some of these children were victim of abuse and had severe behavioral and mental health challenges. They also have fostered a child who had a traumatic brain injury. The Peels are used to managing rigorous schedules that include taking children to medical and clinical appointments as needed. They exercise patience and provide a whole lot of emotional support, which has added to the successful return of several children to their families. To give you one more example of the Peels' commitment to children, they accepted a sibling group of three brothers, ages four, six, and seven. All three had multiple diagnoses related to severe developmental delays, lack of socialization, and mental health concerns. The youngest child could not communicate verbally, and the older two children were limited verbally. However, they were able to communicate, but only in a way where the two of them could understand. The Peels were able to maintain the sibling group within their home for many years and played a huge role in them mastering through developmental milestones. The older two children remained in the Peels' home until at some point it was determined that they needed a different placement setting. The younger child went on to graduate from high school and is now a sophomore at a four-year university. He is employed part-time and has obtained his driver's license. During the epidemic year, he resides on campus. However, he continues to return to the home of the Peels on weekends and during holiday breaks. This young man plans to obtain a degree in information technology. He was recently asked, "How is college going?" And he replied that "Some days are difficult. However, he knows that he can reach his goal because he is determined to do so." He also stated that the Peels continue to support him and assure him that he will succeed. Please join us in thanking the Peels' family.
Thank you. I think it's a much worse strike work, so I'll just, yeah. We're told to love our neighbors ourselves. If you're looking for an example of love, the epitome of love, this is the epitome of love right here. Let's give them another.
No.
I'm sorry.
As a small token of our appreciation for the love that you share with children in our community, I want you to head should I give you the basket or? And would you like to make comments? And I'll hold the basket.
All I want to say is that all that I have done, I have done out of love. And because I couldn't have kids, that was my way of giving back to the community.
Thank you. Our next item is the presentation of lapel pins to our newly appointed members of our various boards and commissions. And that will be done by Councilman Bill Moody. And those receiving a pin, if you'll come forward, please.
When I call your name, if you will please come forward. With the Downtown Design Committee, Mr. Nathan Leahy. With the Housing Board of Adjustments and Appeals, Ms. Antoinette Anders. With the Parks and Recreation Commission, Mr. Glenn Brooks and Mr. Carl Burton. With the Portsmouth Redevelopment and Housing Authority, Ms. Renee Wicks. With the Southeastern Alcohol Safety Action Program, Mr. Michael Gray. I'm sorry. Also with Portsmouth Redevelopment and Housing Authority, Mr. Edward Barham IV. With the SPSA Landfill Advisory Commission, Mr. Mark Godalde Giotrofsky. And with the Wetlands Board, Ms. Ellen Comstock.
Is it on? Let's give these boards and commission members a nice round of applause. Along with being very capable, they also draw a big crowd. We know your time is the most valuable asset that we all have. And we appreciate that each of you are going to use it as a tool to make our city a better place to live, better place to visit as well. And, you know, you're part of our team. We appreciate everything that you're going to bring to the table. Some of you are veterans on reappointments. And we appreciate the fact that you've chosen to volunteer your time instead of staying at home on the couch, watching whatever. What you do will be extremely important to our city going forward. We have a lot of great things working, and each of you will have a little piece of that. You will have your fingerprints all over upcoming projects, and that we sincerely appreciate it. Would someone, it's too many to give each of you five minutes, this crowd would be scalping me. Not that I have anything to scalp, but would someone like to say a few words?
There you go.
I'd just like to say thank you to all and to the whole group that's up here. We really appreciate you pointing us to these boards, and we're going to do our very best.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Our next presentation is the presentation of a proclamation declaring the month of November National Entrepreneurial Month. And I'd ask our Director of Economic Development and the members of the EDA and our business community to join us, join me at the Sergeant of Arms desk. Let's begin by having our clerk read the proclamation, if you would.
Yes, sir. City of Portsmouth, a proclamation, whereas the month of November 2019 has been designated as National Entrepreneurship Month in recognition of the critical contributions of America's entrepreneurs and small business owners. And whereas nationally, more than half of America's either own or work for a small business, and they create two out of every three new jobs in the U.S. each year. Small businesses are the backbone of our economy, and we must work to ensure that our city recovers and rebuilds not only from the top down, but also from the bottom up and the middle out. And whereas Portsmouth, Virginia, the majority of our business are small businesses and have fewer than 50 employees. The City of Portsmouth offers support to small businesses through programs in the Economic Development Division, and also recognizes that small business assistance is a partnership with our affiliated organizations. And whereas the City of Portsmouth takes this opportunity to highlight the impact of outstanding entrepreneurs and small business owners, and recognizes that National Entrepreneurship Month is a time for us to celebrate the successes of entrepreneurs and small business, and to thank our small business owners for their contributions to our city, our economy, and our nation. Now therefore, our Mayor, John L. Rowe Jr., do hereby proclaim the month of November 2019 as Portsmouth Entrepreneurship Month, and encourage all residents and businesses to join in recognizing the value of our entrepreneurs and small businesses in the city, region, state, and the nation.
This is just a small token of our appreciation for what small businesses do for our great community. They add value to our community, they add jobs, they add growth to our community. And it's my great pleasure to introduce one of my heroes. I think we have the dream team when it comes to economic development. And so it's my pleasure to introduce our Director of Economic Development, Robert Moore. I'm going to give him the mic and the proclamation, and he in turn will introduce everybody up here.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. Tonight, we have with us, I will start from my left, one of our EDA Commissioners, Mr. Kyle Kavacik. One of our youngest entrepreneurs, Mr. Randy Williams of Tally &amp; Twine Watch Company, Incorporated. From Economic Development Staff, Mr. Armon Smith. Our Chair of the EDA, Mr. Don Scott. Myself. Our Assistant Director, Mr. Brian Donahue. Vice Chair of the EDA, Mr. Ray Smith. Another one of our great entrepreneurs, Dr. Johnny Garcia of Simmons Incorporated, and the newly formed business of Kativa. And then also certainly, we have the Mayor. Want to say thank you to everyone for coming out tonight. Tonight is the opportunity for us to recognize and celebrate entrepreneurs, those individuals that take risks and create the goods and services that we all enjoy. To celebrate those individuals who take that ingenuity and bring their ideas to fruition, whether it's by ambitious business development like Mr. Randy Williams, or whether it's through groundbreaking research like Dr. Garcia. So tonight, we are showing our renewed commitment as an Economic Development Department and as an Economic Development Authority. We're showing a renewed commitment to removing the obstacles as best we can for these small businesses and for these entrepreneurs, so they can continue to embrace their abilities and their ideas and create the next generation of entrepreneurs for our city. Now I'll turn it over to our Chair, Don Scott.
You never follow behind someone that spoke that long with a crowd like this, so I'm going to keep it short. But what I want to say is that it's important that we remind the community that Portsmouth is open for business. Our City Council, our Mayor, we want to make sure that we let everyone know that Economic Development Authority is open to assist with folks in business, and we're very, very proud of the folks that we attract, great businesses that are attracted to Portsmouth, and that's why Portsmouth is moving in the right direction. Thank you.
Again, let's give our entrepreneurs a grand hand. And Portsmouth really grows great businesses. In fact, Dr. Garcia has been chosen in the past as the Hampton Roads Business of the Year. And so if you want to excel in business as an entrepreneur, move to Portsmouth. Our last presentation, Councilman Battle has asked for a point of personal privilege to introduce a school group that can't stay for the whole meeting. Councilman Battle?
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of Council and sports staff, we're pleased to have in attendance the teen achievers of the Portsmouth Chapter of Jack and Jill of America. Will you please stand? These are students who are here with their parents. The teens and their parents are dressed in orange advocating social change against gun violence. The Portsmouth Chapter's president is Summer Banks, and the teen achiever president is Brianna Wright. Let me say, Ms. Wright, that I would like to, on behalf of the council, thank you and your dad, the past mayor of the city, on the sacrifices you made for our city. And for the teen achievers, may God bless you and your quest to make the world a better place. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our presentations. We're now at the next item on the agenda, which is public hearing. And with that, Madam Clerk, will you read the protocol for speakers, please?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks should be directed to the City Council as a body rather than to any particular member of City Council, staff, or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, ma'am. We have four public hearings this evening, and one does not have to have signed up to speak at a public hearing. Once I open the public hearing, if you'll come to the lectern and please state your name, you'll have five minutes to speak either for or against the matter that's before City Council. And with that, our first public hearing is item 19-373. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of that, please?
Yes, sir. Public hearing with respect to the adoption of a proposed resolution in substantially the following form, creating a wireless service authority under the act.
And this public hearing has been duly advertised?
Yes, sir.
Okay. With that, I'll open the public hearing. And I do have one person that has signed up to speak, and that's Barrett Stork. And sir, you have five minutes? If you'll state your name, please.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor Rowe, members of council. My name is Barrett Stork. I'm the Director of Government Affairs for Cox Communications. For 40 years, Cox has been providing services in Portsmouth and Hampton Roads. We employ about 1,600 local residents, and we are proud to be a part of this community. As a major provider of broadband services and a strong supporter of economic development, we want to make it clear to all businesses who are interested in expanding or relocating in Hampton Roads that the region is ready. Cox has been installing fiber in Hampton Roads for decades. We have installed millions of dollars in our network, excuse me, we've invested millions of dollars in our network, and we continue to invest to prepare for the future. The city is connected by thousands of miles of fiber, and we're bringing even more to prepare for the future. From small startups to data centers and biomedical research facilities, our carrier-grade network can provide any level of broadband that a company may need, even all the way up to 100 gigabit service. We're also utilizing our network to support the deployment of small cell devices, which help to enable the coverage of 5G across the region. We're proud to have been a partner in bringing the first transatlantic fiber to the area to make Hampton Roads a global data gateway. And we recently completed our connection to the new Global Links Data Center, which will help local companies leverage that international connection. Portsmouth is an amazing place to live, work, and raise a family. It's equipped with Cox's extensive, reliable fiber network that can provide broadband at any level a business needs to conduct their operations. Simply put, we don't ever want to see the region get undersold or placed in a light that could discourage businesses from moving here or expanding here. We love being a part of this community. We appreciate the relationships we've built with Portsmouth and the surrounding localities, and we're proud to call Hampton Roads home. Cox is here to be a partner. We want to make it clear to Portsmouth, excuse me, we want to make it clear that Portsmouth is open for business. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. If you'll call your applause, please. This is a public hearing on item 19-373. Is there anybody else that wants to speak on this matter? If so, please come to the lectern. Anybody else would like to speak at this public hearing, please come to the lectern. Seeing none, I declare that this public hearing is closed. And we will consider this matter later in our agenda. Is that correct, Madam Clerk? Okay. This brings us to item 19-374, which is actually two public hearings. We'll take them one at a time. The first is a rezoning request. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of this application, please?
Yes, sir. Z1904 Uptown. Mark Dignard of Innovative Architecture and Interiors is requesting to rezone approximately two acres located at 1501, 1509, 1515, 1519, 1523, and 1541 High Street, 1502, 1538, 1540, 1544, and 1520 King Street, and 517 Peninsula Avenue from D2 Form-Based Code to neighborhood mixed use in order to construct a 25,000-square-foot Hampton Roads Community Health Center. The future land use map in the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for commercial uses. The property is owned by the Economic Development Authority.
Thank you, ma'am. On zoning matters, our procedure is that I'll call upon the city manager, who will call upon our Director of Planning, to introduce this, but not advocate for the applicant. Once the Director has completed his comments, and if there are no questions from council, we'll then have the applicant come to the lectern, and the applicant will have 10 minutes to present his application or her application. And with that, Dr. Patton?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, I call forward Mr. Bob Baldwin, who is Deputy City Manager and Director of Planning.
Good evening, Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, and members of City Council. As was just read to you, this is a rezoning application for property that is currently zoned D2 Form-Based Code. As councils are aware, we've been instructed to do away with the Form-Based Code zonings. When applicants come in to look at developing the property, we recommend they rezone it into an appropriate zoning category based off of the land use plan prepared by MDC, our consultants, when we did our Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan. So in this case, the request is to move the, to rezone the property to neighborhood mixed use, and that's what you have before you today. We'll note that should council approve the rezoning, this use also will require approval of a conditional use permit. approve the rezoning, this use also will require approval of a conditional use permit, which is the second public hearing item you have before you tonight. I mentioned this item went before the planning commission at their meeting on September the 3rd, where they conducted a public hearing, and by a vote of six to zero, voted to recommend approval.
Thank you, sir. Does any member of council have a question or questions for Mr. Baldwin? Thank you. Now, is the applicant in the room, and if so, would the applicant come to the lectern? And you'll have 10 minutes to present your application. As you come to the lectern, if you'll designate a spokesman, and identify yourselves, please.
Good evening, Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, and council members. My name is Mike Glenn, and I represent the developer, 1541 High Street LLC. And development team here is Mark Dignard with Innovate Architecture, Dan Martin with Innovate Architecture, Chris Parrish with Parrish Lane, and Barbara Willis, who's the Chief Executive Officer with Hampton Roads Community Health Center. I thought we had 20 minutes, so I'm going to have to cut my little presentation short, but I'll be as brief as I possibly can. Thank you for the opportunity tonight to let us present you to this project. I'll just take a few minutes to provide the background details of the project and why we're seeking a rezoning and a use permit for 1541 High Street. As was mentioned earlier, we're trying to develop a 25,000-square-foot medical health facility, and we will be able to present to you tonight what the Hampton Roads Community Health Center does, who they serve, and why it's so beneficial for the community. Finally, Innovate Architecture will present to you critical aspects of the design and the site layout, which we believe will enhance the project, the community, and add to the appeal of the city of Portsmouth. The site is a semblance of 12 parcels to create two acres. The land originally owned by the Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority was transferred to the Economic Development Authority in February of 2017 via public hearing for the sole purpose of development and construction of Community Health Center. The Economic Development Authority then entered into a letter of intent with our entity to purchase the land, followed by a purchase agreement. The process started in 2017 and was ended with a fully executed purchase agreement on May 22 of this year. Both the letter of intent and the purchase agreement were presented and approved in public hearings. HRCC is currently located off of Effingham on Lincoln Street in a 60-year-old shopping center that has been retrofitted and repurposed to house their medical facility. Several years ago, the city approached HRCC about relocating their health center to a new location that is more centrally located, modern, and allow for the specifically, specific needs of the medical facility.
Excuse me, sir. You are the applicant for the next item, too, the conditional use permit.
That is correct.
I think for efficiency, for both the public and the council, and for you, let's combine your two presentations into one, and you, in fact, do have 20 minutes.
Then I can slow down a little bit.
You may. You may. And that way, you don't have to give the same presentation.
Twice.
Condensed, twice. Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor.
So you have 20 minutes.
Okay. As I mentioned, we have entered a new contract with the EDA to purchase the land for the development of the medical center. To date, we have 35% construction drawings complete. The project provides a significant economic impact to the city of Portsmouth via job creation during construction and new jobs for the medical center upon completion. Additionally, we have invested more than $10 million, will invest more than $10 million into the community, and are committed to developing a Class A medical health facility. The fiscal investment, according to the Portsmouth City Real Estate Assessor and information found in national research, we have, this project will have a positive impact on property values in the community. All in all, the many benefits of the Community Health Center far outweigh any perceived negatives. In all cases, economic activity was spurred, and the community was, the community was a beneficiary of that. Prior to today, we've had several discussions with the Westbury Civic League representative, and then we made a presentation to the Civic League on September 17 of this year. We will address all the concerns throughout our presentation, so if there's something that we haven't, we'll make sure we do. I now want to turn over the presentation to Ms. Willis, who will share with you what's great about Hampton Roads Community Health Center. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council members. This has been a long time coming for us, us meaning Hampton Roads Community Health Center, and also for the city of Portsmouth. Let's go back to 1988. That's when Portsmouth General Hospital was closed. 1989, the mayor at that time formed a task force to look at what's going to happen to Portsmouth now that this, the hospital is closed, where there were two hospitals, now there's only one. And so, as a result of that, that task force was able to identify and create what we know now as Hampton Roads Community Health Center, but at that time it was Portsmouth Community Health Center. The reason why Hampton Roads Community Health Center, because we serve all of Southampton Roads. Why this site? Why this time? For the same thing that you've been talking about here today, good health. As a result of our being able to partner with the College of Pathologists just a few weeks ago, we were the only health entity in Virginia that was able to provide free mammogram services to over 60 women, of which, and pap smears, of which six were found to be abnormal. That's what we do. Why move to a site where there's more visibility? That's the very reason for that, so that people can see us, so that people in Portsmouth can be served better. Who's affected already? Let's go back to a report that was done in April of 2017 for Portsmouth, where it was identified that 57% of the Portsmouth residents are obese, and additional 25% are overweight. 47% of Portsmouth residents have high blood pressure, 42% have high cholesterol, 21% diabetes, and 53% say they have little or no knowledge of mental health resources in Portsmouth. This was a report done by, for Portsmouth, and this is a result. Why this site? For visibility. Why this site? To increase employment. Why this site? Please stand all of the Portsmouth Community Health Center employees. These are just a third of the Hampton Roads Community Health Center employees visible here for you to see. That we're providing jobs, skilled jobs. We're providing service. We're helping the least of these. Why? Because our mission statement says, "We care so you can be healthy." That's why we need this building now. That's why this is bigger than a community. This is for all of Hampton Roads. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mark Dignard, and I'm with Innovate Architecture and Interiors. Our firm is a healthcare specialty firm. Over 95% of our projects are healthcare-related, and I've been doing this for about 25 years now. The reason that we were brought into the project was for our industry expertise, because the goal was, we have a site, we have a mission, how do we make this the very best project it can be? How do we optimize everything about the site and all the things that they've been having to deal with for all the years, that they've been living in a 1950s strip shopping center that used to be a below? They've really made it work, but it's outlived its usefulness. So how do we help with that? A couple of images here. The site is at the intersections of High Street, Peninsula Avenue, Twine Avenue, and King Street. It's really close to Norcom High School, which is also, has some real impact on what this Community Health Center can do. Surrounding areas, you've seen to the north and northeast, the Family Dollar, the former Valero. This is to the east, an empty parking lot, or an empty site, I'm sorry, and then some additional buildings there. To the south is the Westbury neighborhood. This building, if you're looking at this picture of the south view, this building itself, the physical building, will be in front of the blue house to the far left, but all the houses to the right will still have open views across. I want to make sure we catch that before we get to the site plan. And this is the view to the northwest. As you can see, that's Norcom High School, and to the west as well. So when we were asked to optimize this site and optimize their workflow and productivity, we were looking at your D2 Form-Based Code. We started working with planning and working with the city on the restrictions that the Form-Based Code put us under. It's very difficult to optimize the site under the, under the weight of the Form-Based Code's requirements. And so, we started talking about it and asked for help, and that's when we decided we should rezone this property to the neighborhood mixed use, because there is a proposed new D2 zoning that you guys are considering, and it will be neighborhood mixed use if that goes forward. So we're kind of early to the table making this neighborhood mixed use, but it is part of the plan that you are heading towards. When we talk about the site plan of the specific site, I want to just point out a few features. This building is an L-shaped building that sets itself back on the corner of the property, which allows the building to open itself up to the community. We're going to talk a little bit, a little bit more about the images you see in front of you. If you look at how the building sites itself relative to the residential units that are at the south of the site, you can see that the building is only in front of actually two structures. We try to minimize the impact on the adjacent neighborhood as much as we possibly could, because it's important that we talk about what's happening inside the building for the use of the patients and the staff, but also for the neighbors outside the building and the community at large. So we've tried to take all of these considerations into play. So the entrance to the building is actually in that interior corner, which shields itself from the residential area. The site plan includes all of the landscaping and screening that's required by the zoning, new sidewalks, lots of amenities, and so the building really doesn't occupy that large of a portion of the site. We think that the way that it organizes itself, again, puts itself to the highest and best use of the site. I'm going to ask Dan Martin from my firm to talk a little bit more about the exterior elevations.
Thank you. So in our experience designing healthcare facilities, it's important that they only have one main entrance, one main point of egress, both for the security of the building itself, but the safety of the patients that are using the building. By utilizing the L shape, we've slid the entrance of the building into the corner, as Mark mentioned, and that's marked by the blue tower and the curved green wall of the, of the patient drop-off canopy. Having the entrance in the corner, as Mark mentioned, allows the main thoroughfare into and out of the building to be shielded from the neighborhood to the south, but also functionally, for the health center, it allows patients to enter into the middle of the space, register, and then be taken into the individual clinic spaces. The two-story portion of the building is back towards King Street, which provides ample space in front of the building for our cars to come in and have that patient drop-off in the front. That's very important, a covered patient drop-off, because a lot of people that will be using this facility may have mobility issues. The one-story portion, then, which extends along Twine Street, gives us a facade on High Street. The second smaller blue facade you see there is our pedestrian entrance. There is a bus stop very near the corner of Twine and High Street. So we're using the materials and the colors not only to be consistent and brand the building and create a presence for the Hampton Roads Community Health Center, but also signify where the entrances to the buildings are. The one-story portion along Twine is consistent with a pedestrian scale that's, that's desired as part of the neighborhood mixed use. As we go around to the side and the back of the building, it's important that the architectural language of the building and the fenestration of the building is consistent the whole way around, so that our neighbors are not looking at blank facades, painted CMU, empty walls. They're looking at, you know, the similar architectural language we have to the front, and it's also important to note that there are no entrances on either of these facades. So that concludes our presentation today. Thank you very much for your time.
Hi, ma'am.
Oh, sorry.
Hi, I have one more thing to say. We have had the opportunity to talk to a number of individuals in the community, Westbury, of course, and also FIBUS. We've talked to a lot of folks. We've talked to our patients, and from that, we asked our patients through a petition if they would say whether or not they wanted this building built. Here are the signatures of 400 of our patients at the Portsmouth site saying, yes, we want this building at 1541 High Street. Out of that total of 410 individuals, 121 of them are in the same ZIP code, 23704. In addition to that...
Would you give our Sergeant of Arms that petition, please?
Pardon me?
When you're finished, please give the Sergeant of Arms...
Yes, ma'am, sir. Will do.
Thank you.
In addition to that, for the Westbury community itself, we were able to identify that out of 296 residents, which represents 58 family units, 59 individuals are patients of our facility that we were able to identify. In the 23704 ZIP code itself, 2,174 individuals are patients of our facility. For the Hampton Roads facility in general, we see over 6,000 individuals coming through our doors. So, we serve everyone, your son who's starting a new job, your high school daughter who just got a positive pregnancy test, your mom who never had health insurance before, or your dad who just retired, and you looking for a provider, a dentist, a behavioral health specialist. That's who we serve, and why do we do it? Because we care. Thank you.
Thank you. If y'all will remain there, please hold your applause. Are there any questions from council to the applicant? Councilwoman Simmons?
Yes, ma'am. I do remember meeting with you and some of your, some other folks many years ago, probably four or five years ago now, 2015, Dr. Patton says, with, with then-Councilman Cherry. Babe Cherry and I served as liaisons to the Economic Development Authority back then, and we were talking about this project back then.
Yes.
But I think I understand, and I think it was news to me and might be to a lot of citizens, that not only, all these people you mentioned that you serve, you also can serve me, who comes in with my Optima Health Insurance and sees a doctor. This is not just for underserved population. This is for anybody. Is that correct?
That is absolutely correct. And let me just give you those numbers real quickly. In terms of our insured population, it's actually about 60%, and that's comprised of folks who have Medicare, Medicaid, and private insurance, you know, like Cigna or Anthem, Blue Cross Blue Shield. Our uninsured population, thanks to Medicaid expansion, is down to 26%. So the majority of the individuals who come to our facility, they're seeing board-certified providers, and, and we're able to provide services under one roof, which makes the barrier to accessing healthcare in Portsmouth a lot easier for many individuals, whether they are walking, or driving, or catching the bus.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilman Glover.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Willis. As someone who has been involved with healthcare most of my adult life, on the service side and the delivery... and the delivery side of healthcare, having worked in Portsmouth and in the Portsmouth community, I recognize that we do have a shortage of quality healthcare facilities and access in our city. So I applaud the effort. I am very excited about the opportunity for us to get quality, affordable access to healthcare. And I just wanted to thank you and your staff for continuing to provide that high-level service.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The Chair recognizes the Vice Mayor.
Great. Ms. Willis and Mr. Glenn, I thank you all, right here, right here. Remember meeting you, and we've been looking for a site for you for a long time. So I am glad that we were able to identify this site for you to move forward. You've done your research, you've presented an attractive project, you have a smart team, and I'm just delighted that this would come to Portsmouth because it could have been someplace else, across the water, in another city. Mr. Mike Glenn, I know the quality of work, and you've brought a great team. The presentation, I mean, it's just all of us, it's just Florida's. It is a beautiful building, and I'm going to be delighted to see this in my hometown, Portsmouth. Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other questions? Before we open the public hearing, would you turn the three easels around so that they face the audience, please? Councilwoman Simmons, do you have another question?
Yes, sir, and this one's for you.
Okay.
I notice under non-agenda speakers, the last gentleman, you're going to call him during the public hearing? Okay, thank you.
All right. With that, we're ready for the public hearing. This is a public hearing on rezoning requests, Z19-04. Again, you do not have had to sign up to speak at this public hearing. However, we do have some people who have signed up to speak, and I'll call upon them first. Is there Henry Pittman in the audience? You had signed up to speak on the location of a new health center. Is this where you want to speak, sir? If you'll come to the lectern. If you'll speak in the mic, please.
Good evening, council members. It's a pleasure for me to be here this evening to address you. I'm a member of the Board of the Hampton Roads Community Health Center. I've served for three years, and I'm more than happy to have the pleasure of serving on that board. This is the only facility that I know of, institution, not facility, that I know of that does not discriminate when it comes to providing healthcare. I can say this from a personal basis. I fell into a trap, as I call it. I could not get my provider to give me medical service because I made the mistake of not going to my provider after one year after my birthday. My provider dropped me. That in turn rolled me over, because my birthday comes at the end of the year, to another year. At which time, because I didn't have my annual exam, my insurance dropped me. My only alternative was the Hampton Roads Community Health Center. That's just an example. I found out that the staff and the medical providers are excellent. They're dedicated individuals. They are concerned about giving everyone the best that they possibly can when it comes to health and services. Information on being healthy, which I started to research. We're at a critical time in this country. Americans are unhealthy, especially in this part of the country, the southeast. We have a lot of issues that haven't been brought to the public's attention, as they should have been brought to the public attention, concerning healthcare. I'll give you an example. Prostate cancer for men, highest level in the country, southeastern Virginia, northeastern South, North Carolina. The reason, we don't know, but this is critical because of the high death rate as a result of these types of cancer. We're in an area where obesity is very high. I believe we are number three in the nation when it comes to obesity. This leads to other problems. And the Hampton Roads Community Health Service has targeted these diseases and ailments that affect our population in particular. And so I appeal to you to please do all that you can to support and provide whatever resources you have to the Hampton Roads Community Health Service, Center, excuse me. Any council members have any questions for me? I'm asking that because I always have questions for the board.
No, sir. We're here to listen to you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next person that's signed up is Pamela Wilkins. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, and staff. My name is Pamela Wilkins, and I'm the president of the Westbury Civic League, and I live in the Westbury community. We're all Westbury and all those that are standing with us, would you please stand, in our opposition to this project, to this rezoning and the use permit? I heard everything that everybody said about this is such a great facility, and it's going to service everybody, and they did their surveys or whatever, but it seems to me they did the surveys only to the current patients. Most of the people in Westbury, most of the homeowners out there are working individuals who have private insurance, and the probability of them using that facility is slim to none. Now, we have some other speakers that's going to come up and who are thinking about selling their homes. No one wants a facility there. We have, already have, the Methadone Clinic, behavioral healthcare. We have the Health Department. We have the Oasis, which all three of those entities bring unnecessary traffic in our community at times. We have had problems with people breaking into our cars and vandalizing and doing different things, and this entity will do the same with the kind of, you know, the low-income or uninsured people. And I'm not saying all people are bad because they're not working or uninsured. I'm not saying that. I'm not looking down on them. But I'm saying what's going to come, what's going to draw in our neighborhoods. Now, when the homeowners brought their homes on that piece of property, Portsmouth Redeveloping Housing promised them, assured them, that nothing would be built on that property for 20 years. So after they purchased their home with that assumption that nothing is going to be built there, they purchased their homes. Then in the interim, Portsmouth Redeveloping Housing sold it to the city. Apparently, they didn't share with the city what they had told the homeowners. So this is how all this, I guess, started, you know, being that the land is now the city. So we're not against the health center because we know a lot of people are uninsured and need health insurance. We're not against that. We're against that, that piece of property. There are plenty vacant properties in the city of Portsmouth. Been sitting for years, buildings unoccupied. There are a lot of different places, they can be still on the bus line on High Street where they can build that facility, wide right in front of our front door. Would you want to come out your front door and see a healthcare facility? You know, you wouldn't. No one would want that. So I'm saying is the city, you know, I know it's all about the dollar, everybody's trying to make money, the city's trying to make money, so you're going to have to increase our property taxes so high. But taking consideration the homeowners and the taxpayers that's here in this city, we have a voice too, and we should be able to let you all know what we don't want. It's not like there's nowhere else they can put the facility. There's plenty of property, and your economic development or whoever, they know what's available in this city. Give them another option instead of in front of our front door. And in you all's comprehensive plan, you said that that was going to be for commercial use. So are you allowing a developer to come in just because he desired to do something bigger and better, which is fine, but do it somewhere else? So you're going to allow a developer to come in and tell you guys what they want to do with that land after you have put it in your comprehensive plan? So that lets me know, whatever decisions you all make, anybody can come in and change your mind. Is that what we're dealing with, with our city council and with our city? And that's one of the reasons why a lot of people are leaving this city. We need some stability in here. We need our voice to be heard, and we need for once in life that the city council would take our considerations, you know, take our concerns into consideration. All that they said was fine, beautiful, beautiful building and all that, but you can put it somewhere else. We're not going against what they're trying to provide. And as far as the numbers, the statistics they give, I don't, it's hard for me to believe that over 50 or 60 percent of the Westbury homeowners say they will utilize that facility. We all have our own private doctors, we all have our own insurances, and most of us will not use that facility because we're not using it now. Now, we do have rental property over there, they're probably using it, but most of those people working as well, and they have their own private health insurance. So they paint a pretty picture like it's going to be utilized, but somewhere else. So we're asking you all to consider them finding another location. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Ebony Sussens, and you have five minutes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. My name is Ebony Sussens, and I stay on King Street. I'm here to impose against the health center being directly in front of my property. I've been there 10 years. I was born and raised in Portsmouth, Virginia, all my life. So when I decided to purchase a home, I wanted to give back to my, to where I was from. So I've been there 10 years. In the last two years, there has been so much traffic in that little area. We, the police is being called, cars are being broken into, people are hiding underneath our porches and stuff. So my thing is, like she said earlier, we don't oppose this center coming to the city, but why in front of our property? We was promised that nothing would be built there. I can't even, if this building is being built there, this is what I'm going to see when I sit on my front porch. Like she said, no one wants to come out their front door and see a community center. We already have the social services, Methadone, the Oasis, the high school students. My thing is, when I decided, again, when I decided to purchase a home, I wanted to come back, I wanted to stay in Portsmouth. And I'm imposing the building being built in front of my home because, again, I don't want to come out into this building. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Eleanor Jordan, and ma'am, you have five minutes.
All righty. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. My name is Eleanor Jordan. I reside at 1505 King Street, the little blue house on the far right that they mentioned. And I'm opposing, I say I commend everything that the Hampton Roads Community Center does. I previously have worked in Portsmouth Social Services, and I'm aware of the need for medical facilities. However, I oppose it being built directly in front of my house. If you look at this diagram, that second level is right in front of my house. When I purchased my home, I specifically asked, because there was a vacant lot right across the street, what would be built there? I was informed by the Portsmouth Redeveloping Housing that nothing would be built there for 10 years. It was 10 years, October 10th of this year for me. And they said if something was to be constructed, it would be something recreational or additional apartments or something. I think it's unfair that the Westbury residents were not surveyed, we didn't receive anything. They mentioned that they gave, I guess, surveys or something to their patients. However, I'm not a patient there, and I didn't receive anything in reference to the building being built, like I said, directly in front of my home. There are plenty of other facilities there that service, like they said, the Health Department, that may sound a little repetitive, but we have the Health Department, Portsmouth Social Services, Oasis, behavioral health. In Norcom, there's numerous pedestrians walking through their neighborhood on a daily basis. And in addition, that's a one-way street, King Street is, and it's very narrow. And I'm considering with them building or constructing a building in front of my residence, no one even took in consideration debris, dust, parking, just the noise during the construction. And I just feel like it's unfair for them to build it directly in front of my house in a residential area. And there are other commercial properties on High Street. If you cross Am Light where the old Mary Jane Bakery was, or they knocked down the Jeffrey Wilson Project on the corner of Frederick and, what's that, Turnpike? Or even in the maternity ward, they just closed the Mary View. Let them move there somewhere besides directly in front of my house. I enjoy sitting on my porch. And if you look at the diagram, it's right where the two-story building is being built directly on my front door. And like I said, I would like for them to just relocate. I don't oppose them constructing it, but just not in front of my home. I wouldn't, and if they do, if they move forward, I am moving. And I was born and raised in Portsmouth, worked for the Portsmouth Virginia Employment Commission, social services, and I am a public service for the city of Portsmouth. I support everything Portsmouth, from every parade, and it's right in front of my house. I go out there and look, but I will relocate. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing on this rezoning matter, and if you desire to speak, please come to the lectern, state your name, and you'll be given five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council. I wasn't going to normally speak, but because of this group that just came here, I want to speak. I want to, two things. I understand the plight of the people that it's going to be built in that facility. But the thing is, you've got the greatest employment generator is healthcare. We know that. The people are getting older, they're going to need healthcare, and healthcare is needed. I mean, and to have a dedicated workforce stand up and, you know, in support of that, that's a treasure. That's something that we should treasure and support. Let me, and also the kingdom, I, kind of a story on two people. I know one person that goes there, she loves her doctor there. She had declining eye vision. She went to the doctor, and the doctor said, you need to apply for disability. She came, she applied to Social Security in July, she got granted that in August, and it was only because of the recommendation of her primary care physician from this health center, as well as her, would be her ophthalmologist, excuse me. The other was another lady who's doctors there. She went there, she had a lump in her chest, you know, right now, the month of breast cancer. She went to the doctor. The doctor immediately made arrangements for her to be able to be seen within a week. You have a treasure here. Considering the people, you know, we all have the problem of development coming in. I live in Old Town. There were residents that were worried about Wawa coming in. You talk about employment, you're going from maybe 10 to 15 people are employed, I mean, were employed on that block, to Wawa, which is good, we like it, it's a thing, but what is the maximum employment with Wawa? 25 people. Look at the employment you have with this facility. I strongly support it. I think it's a treasure for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Petty, ma'am, you signed up to speak. Would you come forward to the lectern? And you have five minutes.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Karen Petty, and I live at 1509 King Street, directly in front of that field where construction is beginning to start. I don't want that field there. I sit on my porch all day, enjoy the view, the parades and everything else that's going on. I don't oppose a medical building, but somewhere else, not in front of our front door. We have enough foot traffic as it is, and we've already been over it, the health clinic, this place, that place, so forth. But you have so many drug addicts hanging, they got the homeless is hanging out. There's going to be problem after problem, having our cars broken into, as they were said before, we had our homes broken into. We have so much traffic on the back street, it's ridiculous. The first day of school, big shootout over there, 18 rounds on one street, not alone the homes and the people that were in danger from that. We go through a lot in our area, and I'm home all day. I don't work. I look out for my neighbors, to and from, their packages, their cars, their doors. And no, you can call me to know the neighbor, no, I'm concerned neighbor, because I want to make sure my people are taken care of. If that center is being put in front of our home, we already see enough on that street. Can you imagine what's really going to be on that street? Our kids are not going to be safe. Our grandkids are not going to be safe. Our grandkids not can be safe. We have a one-way street. People are already going in the opposite end of the one-way street. You have the police chasing people. You have people drawing guns on each other. You have the, like I said, the homeless and the people trying to feed the homeless and the stores that are being robbed across the street from us. It's constant something going on. And I'm sitting on my porch, a lot of times I see a lot, people thinking that I don't see, because I love my front porch. I'm out there all day. I watch my neighbors' backyard, I watch their front yards, anything out of the ordinary. I am a concerned citizen. I love Portsmouth. And my son's graduated from high school here. My girl's graduated from high school here. I have six children. They all graduated from high school here in Portsmouth. I love it. And I, when I bought my home, I love the fact that I can sit on that porch and watch nothing but the street and the things that's going on, still protecting my neighborhood. I don't want to relocate. If that building goes up in front of our home, a lot of us are going to relocate. And it may not matter to some people, but it matters to us because when we bought that, that was our home. We are planning to stay there for years to come. And if something came of, of a level of something for the kids, playgrounds or things of that sort, not a medical building was going to draw traffic all day, when we already have that problem in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. This is a public hearing on a rezoning request. Its item is Z nineteen dash oh four. If you want to speak at this public hearing, please come to the lectern and identify yourself, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmen and Women. My name is Sarah Rogers. I happen to be the Director of Nursing at Hampton Roads Community Health Center. I'm also a Portsmouth resident. I graduated from I C Norcombe High School. Ms. Willis made a comment about your teenage children becoming pregnant in high school and needing somewhere to go and get care. That was me at seventeen in I C Norcombe High School. A lot of my care was obtained at the Public Health Clinic. Now Hampton Roads Community Health Center has employed OBGYN physicians, great OBGYN physicians, where people, not only high school students who may become pregnant, we know it happened, but women who also need that care, right? And it's in walking distance, and it's on the bus line. A lot of my issue when I was in high school was not being able to get to a facility that I could get great care. Also, in addition to that, we have great pediatric physicians there. Just recently, I'm also a patient there, and I have private insurance. Just recently, my son was in the hospital with a disease that was very rare. His pediatrician is at Hampton Roads Community Health Center. I went to what I thought was a great hospital to get his care. They weren't able to identify exactly what his condition was. But when I came to Hampton Roads Community Health Center, the pediatrician on staff was able to say exactly what my son had, and he was able to get care immediately without delay. He had Kawasaki's disease. That's a disease that if it can be missed, and if it is missed, it could be deadly in children. Hampton Roads Community Health Center saved my son's life. So just think about that when you're making your decision.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Is there anybody else who would like to speak at this public hearing? Please come to the lectern and identify yourself.
Good afternoon. My name is Brenda, and I'm a resident at Westbury, and I'm an employee at Hampton Roads Community Health Center by choice. I wanted to work in the area which I lived. I didn't get to choose what I see out my front window. When I look out, I actually saw my sister-in-law waving back at me in a senior high rise. That's how close in proximity we are to where we live, where buildings are concerned. However, I can tell you that Hampton Roads Community Health Center is, has, is sore need that they are filling. On the website, I am the enrollment person, I'm the Certified Applications Counselor for Health Insurance Enrollment and Resources. When you go to the marketplace, healthcare.gov, Hampton Roads Community Health Center is the only health center listed to assist you with healthcare enrollment. As a result of the Medicare expand, Medicaid expansion, we have enrolled, I have enrolled as, as our team, at least three hundred-plus people, with so many more people who need that service, and we're there to provide it. I don't think it's so much as proximity. I understand the lady's concern in where you live and what's in front of you and our environment. It's everywhere, it is unavoidable. Recently, at our church, Fourth Baptist, someone stole the catalytic converter from the van. Nothing is exempt, and no one is exempt. It's not who's being served in a building or who's being serviced in a building. It is the nature of the beast that will take advantage of anything, any place. So that's what I was concerned about. It's everywhere, it's unavoidable. My heart goes out to the young ladies who like to sit on their porch. I haven't had that opportunity to sit on my porch. I'm at work all the time. I'm always at work and serving. When the building is larger and more accessible for people, we'll have more people. We're surrounded by, food line is surrounded by the homeless people, they not the healthcare center. When you go to fuel line, you cannot avoid them, the food line where we live, you can't avoid them. A lot of them I know, because I've enrolled them in health insurance. You can't avoid them, it is what it is, and it is where it is. I, I've just been in Portsmouth since love brought me to Portsmouth. So I don't know a lot about Portsmouth. I'm not a Greyhound, I'm not a Wilson person, I'm Booker T., will be, ride or die. So, and even when I go back to the Norfolk side, to service the Norfolk side, I hear the same stories about how we're being affected by society. It's, it's unavoidable. We see a need, and we have the heart to come out to the community to service the people and serve the need and fill the need. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. I'm going to pause the public hearing for a second and ask the applicant to move the feather boards to the base of the skirt of the dais here. So that the audience can see it. If you could put it so it can be viewed, not, not there, against, against here. And further down so that the public can see it. No, please. Thank you. Well, we're continuing the public hearing on this rezoning request, and if you desire to speak, please come to the lectern and identify yourself, and you'll have five minutes.
Good evening. Mark Godolda Giatrofski, P.O. Box five oh one four one, Portsmouth. Mr. Mayor, Honorable Members of Council and fellow interested parties, those of you who are familiar with the speeches I've presented in this chamber know that I am a community advocate, and I have been someone who believes in community empowerment. With that said, I want to draw an analogy, so this may seem like a deviation, but it's really to the point. I've recently been approached by representatives of our power company. I live in a house that has underground wires. The power company has an extensive initiative going forward to try to increase the reliability of the delivery, particularly during storm events. And they need an easement on my property in order to interconnect neighbors whose power lines are above ground. I don't relish the prospect of having a box sitting on the front part of my, my property. But I far less relish the prospect of our home and our neighbors' homes being cut off from service when a category two, three, four, five storm roars through here. If I can do something, if I can accept a certain amount of inconvenience for the greater good, I'm willing to do that. I believe that this is a similar situation. I don't believe that the neighbors in Westbury who have concerns about the aesthetic consequences of putting a building in front of their properties, or where they will be able to see it from their properties, can be assuaged. But I believe there is a greater good to be done here for the community and for Westbury as well, because we will all be beneficiaries if the level of healthcare in our community is improved. And, you know, I would not wish ill on anybody, but a day may come when people in our city who currently have health insurance find it unaffordable and need to rely on, on the healthcare resources that this center offers. But also, those of us who do have healthcare, they provide sliding scale coverage, any of us can qualify for this assistance. So yes, there will be some sacrifice, and I'm sorry that, I'm sorry that it's unwelcome, but I believe that there will be a greater good served by approving this project, and I support it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Again, this is a public hearing on this rezoning request. If you desire to speak, please come to the lectern, you'll have five minutes. Any further speakers? This is a rezoning request, a public hearing. If you desire to speak, come to the lectern. See none. I declare this public hearing closed. And so that we can consider this matter, is there a motion? We have a motion that's been made and seconded, which is to approve. This matter is on its first reading. It'll come back for its second reading on November the twelfth. Any discussion on the motion? All ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, the motion carries. Which brings us to our next public hearing, which is U.P. dash nineteen dash fourteen. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. U.P. dash nineteen dash fourteen, Uptown. Mark Dignard of Innovate Architecture and Interiors is requesting a use permit in order to construct a twenty-five thousand square foot Hampton Roads Community Health Center at fifteen oh one, fifteen oh nine, fifteen fifteen, fifteen nineteen, fifteen twenty-three, and fifteen forty-one High Street, fifteen oh two, fifteen thirty-eight, fifteen forty, fifteen forty-four, and fifteen twenty King Street, and five seventeen Peninsula Avenue. The property is currently zoned D two Form Based Code, and the applicant is jointly proposing a rezoning to the Neighborhood Mixed Use zoning district. The property is designated for commercial development on the future land use map in the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan. The property is owned by the Economic Development Authority.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll follow the same protocols as the last public hearing, except for the fact that the applicants already had twenty minutes. And so with that, Dr. Patton?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, Will Cole, Deputy City Manager, Director of Planning, Mr. Robert Baldwin.
And good evening, once again. As you aware, this is the companion application to the rezoning application Z nineteen dash zero four that you just took action on. In the Neighborhood Mixed Use zoning, a facility such as this requires a use permit, and therefore the applicant has applied for use permit before tonight. This was considered by the Planning Commission at their meeting on September third, twenty nineteen, where they had a public hearing. And by a vote of six to zero, the Planning Commission recommended approval, subject to the five conditions which are contained within your staff report. Be glad to answer any questions.
And the chair recognizes Vice Mayor Lucas, Lisa Lucas Burke.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Baldwin layers on to the planning commission, and just for the purpose of the audience and our viewing public, I know that a lot of persons who will utilize this center may be on the bus line and may not have transportation, but can you just let us know how many parking spaces were needed for?
Well, this, this application, and I don't have the number right in front of me, but it's well over a hundred parking spaces in their parking lot, and it exceeds by a little bit the zoning order's requirement for parking. So it's more than sufficient onsite parking, as opposed to what we typically see. This one actually exceeds its parking requirement.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions to Mr. Baldwin? Thank you, sir. With that, I'll open the public hearing on U.P. dash nineteen dash fourteen, and I'll take those that have signed up to speak first. And then after that, anybody who is desiring to speak, please come to the lectern, and you'll have five minutes. Our first speaker is Pamela Wilkins. And ma'am, you have five minutes?
Pamela Wilkins, again, Westbury Civic League, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council members. Again, I haven't changed from the first, first, so many. We do not want this facility. Why can't the city find another area for them to build it? Everything everybody said is fine. Most of their staff are patients of theirs. And one Westbury lady says she's a, she's a patient. I mean, did they do the demographics to see not only Westbury, but the surrounding communities? Will they use that facility? We haven't heard that. And majority of what she was saying, most of the people are getting Medicaid, Medicare, and that extended Medicare. So of course, you know, Medicare is only going to pay so much, so they probably have to go to a facility like that. But if you got your own private insurance, you can go wherever you like to go. And I'm sure someone would, I know me myself, I have my own personal insurance through my job, I wouldn't go there for services. I would get a, you know, go to a regular physician. Not saying they're not physicians, but, you know, if you got health insurance, you're not thinking about a community center. Usually, historically, community centers were built in low-income areas, in rural areas, where the people did not have access to healthcare. This area, what they're planning to put it, is, does not fall in that category. You know, so I don't know what the positive that this council see in that, as far as moving it, right where it's, where you're, they're planning to put it. Why can't you look at another site? They're still on the bus line. All this vacant property been in Portsmouth for years, way before this council. Why none of those been, you know, looked at? What's the underlying line of what's going on here? Evidently, something underlying, underlying is going on that we don't know about. And this city constantly does that. Westbury, since we have been there, we have to deal with all kinds of stuff. People come and trying to, they tried to put a cell phone tower. We had to fight against that. They tried to put, what was it? Oh, the city hired a city assessor who was fired from Suffolk, and she came in and raised a property tax in just our community. What sense does that make? It didn't cover the whole Portsmouth, just one area. And we had to come fight for that and change that, because that would have caused the individuals who bought homes out there, for their mortgages to go up. So we had to fight that. So my thing is, what is it with Westbury? Do you all see yourselves a vibrant community? Or just a place that just throw anything, put anything in Westbury? That's okay, just, just put anything there. That's the way we feel. But you, but we're taxpayers, just like you all are. And we take pride in our homes, just like I'm sure you all do. So sometimes we got to push past the profit that this one going to make or that one going to make. You got to think about everybody, not just the money all the time. You got to think about the individuals who live in your city, who was born and raised in your city, and continue to live in this city and contribute to it. So is that what this council want? People to constantly just keep moving because of all kinds of stuff that's going on in Portsmouth? Is that what this council want? I mean, it's ridiculous. It's ridiculous. What we, Westbury, have had to deal with since we bought out there. It doesn't make sense. And any developer just come and just want to put anything, it just, throw it out Westbury. Oh, they ain't going to say nothing. Just throw it out there. No, that's not right. We value our properties just like you all do. And when you bought your homes, you took in consideration what was surrounding it as well. To keep your property value up, to keep people wanting to move in there if someone sold a house and moved out, putting somebody, someone else buying the house to keep the value up. We want the same thing. So I'm just asking you all to reconsider. Just reconsider somewhere else. That's all I'm asking, just reconsider. And be, not be so fast to jump to a conclusion based on what they're saying, all this stuff they're going to offer, and half of their client, their patients that work there, and their, you know, that's, most of their patients. And of course, they're going to say good things about it. And we're not saying anything bad about it. We're not. We're saying that's a nice facility, if was here to, you know, accommodate those who don't have health insurance, but not in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Ebony Sussens. And ma'am, you have five minutes. And ma'am, you have five minutes?
Good evening, Council Members. Again, nothing has changed, like she said earlier. Again, I've been at my home for 10 years, born and raised in Portsmouth, Virginia. Went to school here. Asc� Northcombe High School graduate, 1998. My family stays here. And when I decided to purchase a home, I wanted to purchase it in Portsmouth. My thing is, I've been there for the last couple of years, a lot of traffic. Like she said, we have traffic all over, on the back street, on the front street. We have a one-way street. People still come down the opposite direction. My thing is, you putting the building right in front of where we stay. We're not opposing, don't bring the building to the, to city. We just saying why in front of our homes? Where we want to enjoy, just like you want to sit on your porch, we want to sit on our porch and enjoy the view too. We don't want to be the view of Hampton Roads Community Health Center. We have the homeless. We have the students walking across the street to Northcombe High School. We have behavioral health. We have social service. We have everything in that one vicinity. Why there? Like she said, there's other, I've been here all my life, so I know there's many properties that's available to put this building on. My thing is, when I purchase things to be delivered to my home, I don't purchase them to be delivered to my home because things have been stolen off my neighbors' porches. I get delivered somewhere else because of the traffic that we have going on in our neighborhood. So my thing is, my, my vision, my, my point hasn't changed. I still don't want this building built in front of my home. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Eleanor Jordan. And ma'am, you have five minutes?
Good evening, again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, and staff. I know it sounds repetitive. I commend everything that Hampton Roads Community Health Center does. It's great work. I just oppose of it being built directly in front of my home. Like I said, if you can look at that diagram, that L shape is directly in front of my house. And like I said, I'm taking all things into consideration. Why even design it that way? Put it on High Street. Why put it directly in front of, well, why put it right in a residential area, although they're saying it's commercial, but directly in front of people's houses? And everything else, I mean, we said it earlier, that's what I'm really opposed of, it being built in front of my home. My dream was to become a homeowner. It took me two years. I went through the first-time home buy program. I was working currently then at Portsmouth Social Services, wasn't eligible because I didn't earn enough money. So I went to work for the City of Chesapeake, qualified, purchased my home, and I'd been there for 10 years, planned on being there for years to come. But, and like I said, it's a one-way street. I didn't expect for them to build a health center directly in front of my home. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Karen Petty. And ma'am, you have five minutes?
Good afternoon, Councilmen. Back again. I'm not gonna stay five minutes. I just want to say, I do not want this building in front of my home. I would like it just the way it is. I mean, I pretty much see everything that goes on. I can kind of look out for my neighbors, one another here, there, getting packages, getting in the doors, whatever. All I want to say is, I just don't want that building in front of our home. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. This is a public hearing on UP-19-14. Is there anybody else that would like to speak at this public hearing? If so, please come to the lectern. You'll identify yourself and you'll have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council Members, audience. My name is Matwan. I work in the Human Resources Department. I'm responsible for the staff development training as well as credentialing and privileging. And I just want to address the alluding to low-class providers. We do not have low-class providers. We have top-notch providers. And I know this because I have to process them through before we hire them. And so I just wanted the community to know that this isn't a random, maybe a licensed, maybe not a licensed providers from medical doctors, nurse practitioners, dentists, dental assistants, nurses, medical assistants, lab technicians, phlebotomists. All of them have to be credentialed. All of them have to pass and say, yes, you are legally able to work at Hampton Roads Community Health Center. In August, we just went through a site visit where we passed with flying colors, to the point where the lady told me, you're so good, I wish I could clone you. That lets you know that we do our job. We make sure we have the right people in place to serve the patients of Portsmouth.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else in the audience that'd like to speak at this public hearing on UP-19-14? If you desire to speak, please come to the lectern and identify yourself and you'll have five minutes. Anybody else like to speak? Seeing none, I declare this public hearing closed. And we now have this matter before us. There's our motion to approve on its first reading.
Move for approval.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded, which is to approve this conditional use permit on its first reading. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we're ready for the question. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Which brings us to the next item on the agenda, which is 19-375. And Madam Clerk, will you present this item?
Yes, sir. Item 19-375 is the receipt of bids pursuant to an invitation for bids for a wireless facility franchise. In accordance with state law, public notice was placed in the local press by the city clerk's office to accept bids for a non-exclusive wireless facilities franchise agreement. The agreement will have a term of 10 years with up to three renewal terms of five years each and will allow for the replacement of wireless facilities within the city's right-of-way.
Thank you. How many bids have been received?
One bid has been received.
Will you read the bid and mark it for identification, please?
Yes, sir. Selco Partnership Doing Business as Verizon Wireless has submitted the following bid. Please consider this correspondence a formal request to submit a bid for a wireless facilities franchise with the City of Portsmouth, Virginia. Selco Partnership Doing Business as Verizon Wireless is a telecommunications service provider and seeks access to rights of way for the installation of facilities used in the provision of communication services. Subject to review, negotiation, and execution of the final form of agreement, Verizon agrees to comply with the city's standard non-exclusive wireless facilities franchise agreement. Please contact me with questions. Verizon's representative, Steve Romine, looks forward to attending the Portsmouth City Council meeting on October 22nd.
To the audience, are there any additional bids? Are there any additional bids? If not, if there are no additional bids, I now declare the bidding closed. And I will open the public hearing on item 19-376, which is a public hearing on the wireless facilities franchise agreement. Madam Clerk, will you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. Adoption of an ordinance accepting the bid submitted by Selco Partnership Doing Business as Verizon Wireless for a non-exclusive wireless facilities franchise agreement, having a term of 10 years with up to three renewal terms of five years each, authorizing the replacement of wireless facilities within the city's public right-of-ways, public ways.
With this, we're now ready for the public hearing on 19-376. Again, you need not have had to sign up to speak at this public hearing. So if you desire to speak, please come to the lectern and you'll have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Rowe and members of City Council. For the record, my name's Steve Romine. I represent Selco Partnership Doing Business as Verizon Wireless. I'll be very brief. We ask that you accept Verizon's bid for a franchise agreement and adopt the ordinance. I'll stand by for questions and we appreciate working with the city attorney's staff to get to a point with the agreement that it's in good shape for us and we appreciate you adopting it tonight.
Thanks, sir. Any additional speakers? Does anybody desire to speak at this public hearing? If you do, please come forward, come to the lectern, identify yourself, and you'll have five minutes. Any additional speakers? I declare this public hearing closed. And is there a recommendation from the city staff on this matter?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, city staff recommends that the bid by Verizon Wireless be accepted.
Thank you. We have had the public hearing. We have the recommendation from the city staff. Madam Clerk, this will come up later in the agenda. Is that correct?
Actually, this is the opportunity for City Council to vote on this item.
All right. So that we can have this matter before us for our consideration, is there a motion to approve?
Move for adoption.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded, which is to adopt the ordinance. Any discussion on the ordinance? Any discussion on the motion? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, which is to adopt, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
We now come to unfinished business and I'm going to declare a three-minute recess to reconvene at 8:45 to give people a chance to stand up and stretch. We're now in recess. We're going to come back in the session. If everybody will take their seat, please. I'll call our meeting back to order. We're out of recess, which brings us to unfinished business. And this is an item that's been tabled in order for us to consider it. Is there a motion to bring it off the table?
A motion to bring the matter back onto the table.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion to bring this matter back before us. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, this motion passed and the matters before us. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of the ordinance, please?
An ordinance to amend and reordain Article II and Article III of Chapter 30 of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia by amending Sections 30-122 and Section 30-243 for the purpose of conditioning the adjustment of retirement allowances and the payment of supplements under the Portsmouth Supplemental Retirement and the Portsmouth Fire and Police Retirement System.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt? And that's, will you clarify, your motion is to adopt with the changes that we would discuss?
Yes.
Okay. Is that agreeable to the person making the second?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion before us, which is to adopt this ordinance with the language that we have previously discussed this evening. We're now ready for discussion on the motion. All right. We have people who have signed up to speak on this matter. And the first speaker is Mark Yudongi Yutrosky. And sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Honorable Members of Council, and fellow interested parties. I had hoped to be speaking in favor of this item, but as I have come to learn, it's not really doing what it needs to do, which is to say that council would be taking a responsible approach to the funding of our in-house retirement funds. The way that would come about is by dedicating excess funds and allocating funds intentionally to shore up the fund balances in the Portsmouth Supplemental Retirement System and the Portsmouth Police and Fire Retirement System. You have not been able to achieve the 80% funding level that is the standard for viability of pension funds, public pension funds, by going about the funding as you have. And I understand that it takes political courage to stand up to a special interest group of the nature, of the one that is constantly lobbying you for supplements. But by acquiescing and putting money into their pockets short-term instead of shoring up the funds themselves and allowing those funds with a higher level of funding to work harder through investments, thereby helping the cause of solvency of the funds, you're undercutting your own efforts and you are imposing a burden on the other taxpayers in the City of Portsmouth. These plans were defined when the recipients were hired. They accepted employment within the confines of the, of the employment agreement. They were paid for their work. The city contributed in the entirety to their pension funds, and that was the deal. Now, because of political expediency, your predecessors and you are constantly undercutting the solvency of the funds and imposing a future burden on taxpayers in the city and a current burden. It's inequitable and it's cowardly. So I oppose this particular item in its current form and ask you to withdraw it and redraft it so it shows true fiscal responsibility. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Grover Holloman. And sir, you have five minutes?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of Council, City Manager. My name is Grover Holloman and I'm a retired City of Portsmouth employee with 29 years of service. I'm here tonight to oppose the adoption of ordinance 19-371, I mean, 351, excuse me. This ordinance, if adopted, will place a financial burden of the city on the prior-year employees who risk their lives on a regular basis to make this city a safe place to work and to live. These retirees are also the ones that can least afford to deal with the ordinance. They're having to make a choice, in many cases, between their medications and their This is not the promise we were given when we were employed by the city. This promise was given by City Council members, just like you, who understood what the future needs would be for the retirees. They did find a way to keep their promise. They did find a way to keep their promise. It's up to your turn now. The City of Portsmouth officials are always talking about the city's great history, and the city does have a great, they're right, the city does have a great history. A rich history requires you to take care of the retirees and employees who made this city, who made this history for the city, excuse me. Thank you for your consideration in this most important matter.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Gary Odell, and sir, you have five minutes. Our next speaker is Jack Lillenthal, and sir, you have five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council Member, City Manager. My name is Jack Lillenthal, I'm a retired firefighter, City of Portsmouth. I'm here to oppose the adoption of the ordinance tonight. When I came to work in 1973 for the Fire Department, I was very lucky, and I wanted to learn as much as I could about the job. And in my efforts to do that, I asked several of the fellows who'd been on the job for many years, what can I do to prepare? What can I do to prepare for the future? What can I do? And, of course, the answer we got, of course, all the young guys got was, oh, learn your job, do it well, study, try to get promoted if you can, but most of all, get a part-time job. I said, well, why is that? And they said, well, you know, you've got to get your 40 quarters of Social Security in. You've got to get that 40 quarters in. At the time, we were not in the Social Security system, and so we all went to work. We drove trucks. We delivered oil. We cut yards. We did home improvements, anything we could to make those 40 quarters. Fast forward 10 years later, we were hit with something out of Congress called the Windfall Elimination Provision, where it extends an offset when you receive your Social Security many, many years later, and you receive your offset, it cuts your Social Security quarters, no matter how many you have earned. And I've earned roughly twice as many as the 40 that was required, both before working for the Fire Department and afterwards. And a Windfall Elimination Provision, or the WEP, cuts that by 40%, no matter how much you made. And so it can even, in some occurrences, follow you into the grave by your surviving spouse. He or she may be hit, depending upon the individual basis. He or she may be hit with something called a government pension offset. At a time when a surviving spouse only has one income now, their income can possibly be reduced, once again, depending upon the individual circumstances. So my point to you is, this afternoon, or this evening, you know, it brings us here to tonight. I ask that you vote no on this thing. As Mr. Holloman pointed out, there are some folks out there that have to make some tough decisions, and the only way that we can try to maintain with the cost of living is through these pay raises or allotments that you have been so gracious in giving us throughout the years, and we are grateful, we appreciate that. But we're asking you tonight to get innovative, go back to the drawing board, see what else can be done about this thing. You have a meeting coming up November 25th, and a handout that we received, and a work session with the investment people. This is a rush to judgment tonight. Wait and see what they've got to say. Keep being creative. Keep control of the police and fire pensions fund in your hands, and make the decisions that you've been elected to make. And God knows, governing is difficult work. You know that better than I do, and I wouldn't trade places with any of you. Governing's hard work, but that's what you're elected to do, and we ask that you vote no on this proposed change tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Garland Alexander, and sir, you have five minutes.
I live at 2913 Tanmark Lane. I am representing Police and Fire Retired Association and other retirees. I'm speaking on behalf of, about the city code change you want to make in 30-122 and We feel the proposed change will prevent retirees from receiving any increases until the pension system reaches 80%. The change is not necessary because the council has that option already, as the code is currently written. Before Dr. Patton became City Manager, we received one-half of general wage employees' COLAs. Dr. Patton started to give him one-time supplements in place of COLAs. For the past four years, this was not our pension, this is our, this lasts for the past four years. This was not out of our pension system, but both of these were given outside of these codes that exist now. The council has plenty of discretion on how much and if any worthy funds will be appropriated. The code change will turn everything over to the management and her staff and remove council's authority. It is also, will, some, it is also statistically some council's members who don't want to take, don't, members who don't want us to ask for funds for the retirees. The lowest-paid retirees will be hurt the most. Some of you may think they should have done better to provide for their retirement. As for the $2.6 million we've gotten over the past four years, according to John Hopkins, we would have received $2.3 million if we'd have received raises out of the pension system as other systems have done. We are now being blamed for the pension system funding problem. We are asking you to leave the code as is. Thank you, and I'll ask everyone that supports this to please stand. Any questions?
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. We'll continue the council's discussion on the motion. Is there any further discussion? Chair recognizes Councilman Bill Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. I am going to vote no. I think it's important that the council take full responsibility on whatever the decision is annually, on either a COLA or some type of stipend or bonus. I think changing the code.
Is your mic on?
Mic's on. Changing the code, I think, is basically hiding behind legislation, hiding behind the code, and trying to escape that responsibility. Everyone up here is certainly well aware by now that the need to look out for future retirees, we get that. We get the need to close the gap from the 67% up to 80. Obviously, the ultimate goal would be 100%, but we can't do it all at once. I think singling out fire and police and supplemental retirees is kind of putting a target on them that, shame on you, you're at fault here, when that's not the case. There are only two ways to close that gap. One is through the market's performance, which some years will be up, some years will be down. The other way is the city's contribution. I think in some years, that has certainly been lacking. So to say tonight that, I don't want the public to think that if this passes, all of a sudden, problem is ended, that that won't add, that tonight, that won't go from 67% to 68%. It won't move the needle at all with the passage of this. What would move the needle is if council had a policy. We don't have to have a code. Back when we used to give 50% of the COLA, 50% of what the general wage people received, that wasn't even a written policy. That was a policy, spoken policy by council, and it was carried on for a number of years. And what it did, it prevented retirees from having to come here and plead for a small increase, because they got, at that point, they got 50% of what general wage employees got, retirees got, excuse me, employees got. So I think it's important that we keep the responsibility with council. Folks out here in the audience and watching at home, they can fire members of staff, they can certainly hire or fire us, so I think that's where that responsibility should reside. So consequently, I will vote no.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Glover?
Thank you, Mayor. One of the things, so in the interest of transparency, I serve as the liaison to the Retirement Board, and I want to clarify a couple of things for the audience. There's some misconception and misperception, and I want to be clear to let the retirees in the audience know that stood up. No one is being cowardly. No one is disrespecting your service, and we appreciate what you've done. And so when we put the information out there, I want to speak to you specifically on a couple of issues that I think are of importance. Some of you may be aware the city has supported you, and we will continue to support you in the best way possible. In 2013, this city, the City of Portsmouth, showed their support when they borrowed or financed $168 million to shore up your retirement, to make sure that those dollars that were available to you. In addition to that, the city also pays a debt service on that $168 million of $10 million a year, and we add an additional $8 million in contributions. That's today. And over the years, as your organization has lobbied, we have respected that lobbying position, and to my knowledge, looking at the history and in the Retirement Board meeting, we have granted the stipend or the supplement. We have a math problem, folks, and we have a problem with the current retirees that are drawing from the system. We have folks that have not even entered into the system, and we have to, we, the seven of us, we have to ensure that those dollars are there when the last person draws the last dime. And that is not in disrespect to what anyone has done. No one up here is being cowardly. This body has worked, and I agree with the gentleman, we can get innovative, but we have to do that, and that can be ongoing. But, and the last thing I would like to include on that, because I don't want to take up too much time, this piece that we're proposing tonight, it does not, I repeat, it does not take away your opportunity to come before council every year and do what you currently have done. It does not. And I want everybody to be clear to know that. I don't have to come here and tell anybody a story. Most of you, some of you, know where I live, and we've talked extensively about this issue. I don't need to lie about it. But I want to make it crystal clear. What we have done and what we are going to do is always going to be in your interest and the best interest of every retiree that is eligible to receive their retirement dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Battle?
I've been trying to explain some things to my colleagues, and I'm just not getting through. That's a shortfall on me. But we put together a document, but we send it to the wrong person. You see, we pay folk to invest and deal with market situations for us, and when a person takes on that responsibility, they are saying that they are at the top of the game and that they are going to make us money. Now, at the onset, they've always had enough money to make money. Example, we have $239 million in both retirement systems. That's enough money to invest anywhere in the market. If you have a background in that, you're supposed to make money. Laymen make money. So, see, this document shouldn't be coming to you. This document should be saying to whom it concerns, because I won't call the investors names, that unless we can get to 80% within the next two years or the next year, we're going to go in another direction. That's what this document should be doing. You're innocent, you're benign in this situation, and we continue to want to put straps on you, and this is the situation that we should be giving to the investors. Now, I'm going to vote no, and I hope my colleagues at the last moment get a reprieve and think about this a while longer. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion on the motion? Here are none, ready for the question. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes, opposed no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Which brings us to our next item. Would you read the caption of the next item, please?
Yes, sir. City Manager's Report. An ordinance to amend and reordain Chapter 32 of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia by amending Article 4, Street Pose, Article 5, Underground Wires, and Article 11, Wireless Facilities, therefore, for the purpose of complying with federal and state laws and regulations regarding wireless facilities and infrastructure.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded, which is to adopt the motion. Any discussion on the question? Here are none, we're ready for the question. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes, opposed no. Councilman Battle? That motion carries. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to item 19-378, consideration of adoption of another ordinance. Would you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting $44,725 of Home Investment Partnership Program income and appropriating said amount in the FY 2020 Community Planning and Development Program Fund.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Ready for the question. All in favor of the motion, which is to adopt, please vote yes. Ready for the question. All in favor of the motion, which is to adopt, please vote yes. Opposed, no. Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Our next item is item 19-379. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And it's the consideration of ordinance. Would you read the caption of the ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting projects for assistance in transition from homeless path funding in the amount of $3,356 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services and appropriating said amount in the FY 2020 Behavioral Healthcare Services Fund for use by the Department of Behavioral Healthcare Services to assist with homeless transition services.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption.
Sir.
We have a motion on the floor that's to adopt, and it's been seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Ready for the question. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to item 19-380, which is the consideration of the adoption of another ordinance. Would you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting an Edward Rhine Memorial Justice Assistance Grant in the amount of $85,764 from the U.S. Department of Justice and appropriating said funds in the FY 2020 Grants Fund for use by the Portsmouth Police Department to fund law enforcement, trauma training, and other authorized uses.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor, which is to adopt this ordinance. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. We're ready for the question. All in favor of the question, the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to item 19-381, which is a ordinance to reappropriate certain funds. Will you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to reappropriate unexpendable funds in the amount of $1,372,272 from the FY 2019 textbook fund budget for the Portsmouth Public Schools to the FY 2020 textbook fund budget for the Portsmouth Public Schools.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion that's been made and seconded to adopt the ordinance. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to item 19-382, and that's the consideration of another ordinance. And Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to reappropriate unexpendable funds in the amount of $10,903 from the FY 2019 Food Services Fund Budget for the Portsmouth Public Schools to the FY 2020 Food Services Fund Budget for the Portsmouth Public Schools.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded, which is to adopt the ordinance. Any discussion on the motion? Ready for the question. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to item 19-383, which is the consideration and adoption of another ordinance. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to reappropriate unexpendable funds from the FY 2019 Portsmouth Public Schools Grant Fund Budget in the total amount of $266,593 to the FY 2020 Portsmouth Public Schools Grant Fund Budget.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption. Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded, which is to adopt the ordinance. Any discussion on the motion? We're ready for the question. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to item 19-384, the consideration of adoption of a certain ordinance accepting grant funds. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting funding in the amount of $317,460 from the Virginia Department of Education and appropriating said funds in the FY 2020 Grants Fund Budget for the Portsmouth Public Schools.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption. Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded, which is to adopt the ordinance. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none and hearing none. We're ready for the question. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Which brings us to our...
Not yet, Mayor.
It still carries.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. We're at item 19-385. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And that's the consideration of ordinance accepting certain grant funds. Will you read the caption of the ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting a hazmat team equipment exercise and training grant in the amount of $30,000 from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management and appropriating said funds in the FY 2020 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services Hazardous Materials Emergency Response Team.
So we can get this matter on the floor for our discussion and consideration, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion to adopt the ordinance, and it's been seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. We're ready for the question. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, nay. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Item 19-386, which is the consideration of another ordinance and its adoption. Would you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting hazardous material emergency response team cost recovery funds in the amount of $901.76 from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management and appropriating said sum in the FY 2020 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services.
So that we can get this matter before us, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion that's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion, which is to adopt? Ready for the question. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to item 19-387, which is the consideration of another ordinance. And would you read that caption of that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting aid to localities funding in the amount of $347,953 from the Virginia Department of Fire Programs and appropriating said funds in the FY 2020 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Ready for the question. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, nay. Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
We're at item 19-388, which is the consideration of the adoption of a certain ordinance. And would you read the caption of this ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting a local emergency management program grant in the amount of $57,992 from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management and appropriating said amount in the FY 2020 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services for emergency management, equipment, supplies, and training.
So that we can put this matter before us, get this matter before us for our consideration, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion that's been made and seconded, which is to adopt the ordinance. Any discussion on the motion? Ready for the question. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, nay. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to item 19-389, and which will need a motion. Would you read the item, please?
Yes, sir. Adoption of a motion to permit Michael Daughtry to adopt a Portsmouth Police Department Mounted Patrol Horse Ginger, a 15-year-old Rocky Mount Quarter Horse Chestnut Dun mare.
Is there such a motion?
Second.
We have a motion, and it's been duly seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to new business, report on boards and commissions. Councilman Lee?
No boards or commissions to deliberate tonight, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. 19-391, items submitted by council members. And Chair recognizes Councilwoman Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. We have quite a few items of interest to the public coming up before we meet again. This coming weekend, on Friday night, the 25th of October, we have the ghost walk in the downtown area that's sponsored by the Old Town Civic League that leaves from Trinity Church at High and Court Streets. That's a ticketed event. On Saturday, we have our second annual trunk, safe trunk or treat event at the pavilion next door. That is from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. for children in costumes. It's on the plaza at the festival park adjacent to the pavilion. There'll be music, games, a haunted house, a costume contest, a photo booth, a bounce house, stilt walkers, et cetera. That's a lot of fun. And that's from 3:00 to 7:00 on Saturday, the 26th. Also on Saturday, the 26th, from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. For older folks, at the foot of High Street will be the Old Town Cruisin' Vintage Car Show. So the cars will be parked along Water Street at the foot of High Street at High Street Landing from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m., and that's a free event. And next Tuesday, the 29th of October, a wonderful event I enjoyed last year. It is the Portsmouth Public Schools All-City Elementary and Middle School Choirs with the Virginia Children's Chorus will be putting on a musical event on Tuesday, the 29th, at 7:00 p.m. at Norcom High School. And it is sponsored in part by the Museum and Fine Arts Commission and the Rotary Club of Churchill. And that's a free event with our schoolchildren with the Virginia Children's Chorus. And then, just before we meet again, Monday, the 11th of November, which is a federal and city, federal, state, and city holiday, is Veterans Day, which means we will be hosting a Veterans Day ceremony on the 11th at 11:00 a.m. at the foot of High Street, under the flagpole. We will have a guest speaker from the U.S. Coast Guard and appropriate veterans memorial type events. If for some reason it rains, we will come inside to the first floor of City Hall. And that's it, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Glover?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say, last Saturday, October 19th, the city cosponsored an event called Bike This Way to End Gun Violence. It was a well-participated event. And I want to thank a couple of folks. I want to thank Vice Mayor Lisa Lucas Burke for her sponsorship of the event. Also, our marketing director, Mr. Lavor Space, city leadership, Dr. Patton and her team, Chief Green and her staff, and of course Sheriff Moore and his staff for making the event a success.
Thank you, sir. Which brings us to non-agenda speakers. And Madam Clerk, will you read the protocol again, please?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks should be directed to the City Council as a body rather than to any particular member of City Council, staff, or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, ma'am. Our first speaker is Stephanie Scales. And ma'am, you have five minutes?
Hi, good evening. My name is Stephanie Scales, and this is my neighbor Katrina Hassel. And we live on City Park Avenue in Portsmouth. For the past six months, we have an issue with a drainage pipe that has been put in our backyard at least 20 years ago, before we even moved into the houses that we have now. We're currently facing a major issue where the drain is sinking and causing major sinkholes in our backyards, all the way up and down City Park Avenue. I have been calling the city, left numerous messages, keep getting passed all around where people are telling me it's not that department, it's not that person, it's not that. And we currently have a situation where our drainage tube that's in the backyard is sinking, and you can literally put your foot right through it. My husband just this afternoon put a rake, the handle of a rake through the holes, and it just went about three foot deep without even using any pressure or anything. So we're just here to try and get some answers of who we can get out there to look at it. Just this past week, they had somebody come out, a contractor come out just all of a sudden, and just fill it with dirt. But it's obviously leaking water from somewhere. And she has a tree in her backyard. I don't know if she wants to speak on it, but it's sinking as well. So we're just trying to get answers as what we can do as residents of City Park Avenue to get that pipe fixed and not just dirt filled into it.
We don't want our children following it.
Yes.
I mean, because currently, like, my husband was just cutting the grass, and his foot went right through it. So I have three young boys, I have two dogs, she's got a young kid. We're just trying to get answers, because we keep getting pushed around and passed around from the city. I've called Public Works, I've called and left messages for a guy named Fred. I mean, I've literally been pushed everywhere. So we're just here trying to get some answers of what the city can do to help. It's a city tube. It's a city drainage tube that they put in to help with the flooding that happens on City Park Avenue. And it continuously gets worse as you go down City Park. So ours is something about two foot, but neighbors next to us are, they have like three-foot sinkholes in their backyard.
Thank you. We're sorry that you're having this problem. And when you sit down, I'm going to ask Dr. Patton to have the appropriate deputy city manager to meet with you
Thank you.
to get the information so we can address the issue for you.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Dr. Patton, would you have?
Mr. Ball.
Okay. Mr. Ball. Our next speaker is Bernard Thomas.
Good evening, Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, and to the council. The reason I'm here tonight is because I've been having problems with, I suppose, the Department of Public Utilities. Since December, my public utility bills, my water bills, have been very erratic, up and down, up and down. I've made three visits personally to the Department of Public Utilities, sharing this concern. And each visit, I was told, as I bought my water bills there, that perhaps there may be a leak in your house. You may want to call a plumber. And after checking with some neighbors and other citizens in the city, what I found out in doing my own research is that there are defective meters in the city. I think the City of Portsmouth Public Utilities, or whoever is responsible, all the citizens of Portsmouth with these defective meters, at least some letter or something should have been sent out to let the residents know that there were defective meters in yards. The Department of Public Utilities having had me to leave... The Department of Public Utilities having had me to believe that it was something, some type of failure on my part. A neighbor mine had a three-hundred-forty-nine-dollar water bill. I talked to a resident out in Haddon Point in Churchland who had a three-hundred-and-some-dollar water bill. They're getting letters from the city or wherever suggesting you check for a leak. And in essence, there is no leak. There was no leak. And someone has known about this all along. I heard Councilman Glover mention early about transparency. I think there should be transparency when it comes to the city communicating with residents. I've been at eleven-twenty-four Alcinda Road the past twenty-five years. I've had one high water bill, and that high water bill was due to a leak some years ago, and now the bills are high again. Every time the water bill go up, the HRSD go up. I got a call from someone in the city this morning at eight o'clock, looking to resolve the issue, and I shared with them that I would make an appearance at council on tonight. And so I think this city owe to the residents of this city some type of, some type of rationale of why the citizens have not been notified. I mean, had I called the plumber, and the plumber said there was no leak, then I would have wasted money when someone has known about this issue all along. And I think it is a disgrace. I think it's unethical, and any other adjective you can think of, of having individuals to think that something is wrong with their system when someone in this city has known about it all along. And I think, you know, someone needs to answer. I have a water bill in my pocket now, and HRSD has declared that they cannot make adjustments until the city make adjustments. But it's unethical. It's not fair, and it's not right. I take no pleasure in paying water bills. You know, seventy-five percent of the world is water, and to have this kind of activity going on is unheard of. And I thank you for your time, and I ask if someone would look into it. And whoever the contractor is had the whatever to leave this stuff in my yard, and I thought I would bring it down tonight as evidence. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Sorry that you're having the problem. I'm glad that you brought it to our attention, and I'm going to ask the city manager to have the appropriate deputy city manager meet with you.
Mr. Mayor, is that on the lead?
Yes, sir.
Many other residents?
Yes, sir. Understand. Mr. Pace?
Yes, he's going to speak.
Our next speaker is Tom Miano. And sir, you have five minutes?
My name is Tom Miano. I'm a resident of Portsmouth for over sixty-five years. I'm the former owner of Scat Bike Shop in Churchland for over twenty years, an avid bicyclist to this day, and very active in the Hampton Roads cycling community. Have a simple little request, to put some bike logos on the road from the Churchland Bridge to Churchland Boulevard. Three times in the last month, I have been brushed by cars going by, and the logo is no more legally binding than if it wasn't there. So the logo just tells people they're allowed to use the road. That's all it means. There's no more rights conferred by that logo, there's no more legal benefits, it's just a reminder to cars that cyclists are allowed to be there. If the city would like to be really bold, then currently it goes from downtown to midtown, put that logo all the way down High Street, all the way out to the Chesapeake Line on the right-hand lane, and I believe a lot more cyclists throughout Portsmouth would be very pleased to see that. So it's a simple request. Perhaps council can make a recommendation to the city manager. I called the city engineer's office five times. Finally, on the fifth time, the secretary called and said, "We'll have to do a study on this matter." Sounds a little bureaucratic. I can't imagine what we're going to study in this. It's a pint of paint and a stencil, which I'm sure the city already has in its arsenal of stencils. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Patton, will you have the appropriate deputy meet with Mr. Miano?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Mr. Jackson...
You can sit down, sir.
You can sit down. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Mr. Jackson has presented to you the bike and pedestrian plan that is underway in the Department of Planning that will address...
Understand, but please get the contact information and details, please, if you'd have the appropriate deputy. Our next speaker is Mr. Sergio Neal, and sir, you have five minutes?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. My name is Sergio Neal. I live in Capitol Manor. First of all, before I start my initial comments, I wanted to say thank you all for at least considering the Hampton Roads Community Health Center. I am actually a patient of Hampton Roads Community Health Center. I get private...
Sir, you're a non-agenda speaker.
Right. I just wanted to thank you all for that piece.
That's, we've already covered that.
Right. I understand that.
Please, please...
But moving forward, I would like to say this. I've been attending, you know, these council meetings and the school board meetings, and a lot of times what has come up is education funding. In the school board, last few school board meetings, they were talking about some reappropriations of funds that needed to come down, and the process that they had to go through in order for that to happen. The way it came out from the school board side was that they were given a lot of difficulty in that process with multiple resolutions having to go through. I think for, in the, in the effort of transparency, I think we need an explanation from the city as to what they, what the city looks for when the school system is asking for reappropriation of funds and how that process actually works, because, you know, all of you all that know me know I'm a person from the looks at a situation from all sides and not take, not take a position until I hear it from all batters concerned. I feel like that a lot of times, you know, given some of the rift between this body and the schools, and the school board, is that some of the, the red tape that comes out, that comes about when it comes to funding from the locality side for the school system is more of a personal matter than it is a business matter. I can assure you that people that are looking at this city are looking at our school system and the resources of lack thereof in their decision-making process to move here. That's part of economic development, and we heard a lot of that tonight. So my concern is, and I think for, for everybody that is interested in public education, but should be everybody in this city, is that we need to make sure that when, when the school system is asking for money, that they are given a due process, it is the appropriate process, and it's gone through like it should be. A lot, a lot of what we heard in those meetings was that the process took a long time, and that if it would have took any longer, some money could have ran out, and some people's jobs may have been on the line. Some people's paychecks could have been on the line. I don't think that's fair to anybody. So, and I'm saying, you know, that's just what we heard. So if there's some clarity, please offer it, because I'm a person, I'm, part of me is a business person, and I don't play with nobody's money, and I wouldn't want nobody to play with mine's. So with that being said, when it comes to what the funds, how the funds are worked through from the city to the school system, we need, I think somebody from either body, both batters together, need to make sure that the process is explained to the public so that we're not left in the dark, because guess what? That money that comes from the locality, from this city, to fund our school system, comes by way of tax dollars. And I think as a taxpayer and citizen in this city, I would like to make sure that my money goes to the correct people like it should and in the timely manner. Because if not, if you think we have a shortage in our education system here in Portsmouth now, I can guarantee you start playing with somebody's money in the school system, it's going to really be a problem. Those teachers in that school, in our school system go through enough hell as it is before, and then for somebody to tell them, hey, you might not get this, or you might not get that, or you might, whatever the case might be, that's a disservice. Then people say, oh, well, guess what? They're pulling our kids out of our school system. Guess what? The private schools would love to have them, because they starting to work scholarships and all that just to get them. And I can guarantee, as a person that works in a private school, the private school system is no better than a public school system, because the only thing, the difference is, the stuff that goes on does not hit the news. Please stop playing, whoever it is, like I told them, I'm going to ask you all, stop playing with the money when it comes to public education in this city. Let's get it right, and let's get it done, and let's move on from all the shenanigans that have been going on when it comes to the relationship between the school board and the city council. Thank you.
Dr. Patton, Mr. Neal has asked for clarity. Would you have the CFO meet with him and explain that we do not play with the school funds, please? Thank you. That's our last speaker, and we have no further business, and this meeting is adjourned.